Start.
Nice.
Hi, oh, okay.
All right. Everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure.
I'm here.
We're early when Mary is not here. I'm sure she's walking to work.
I like.
If she'd like.
How did I?
There's room up.
Big crowd.
There's room up front.
Big crowd. You can make a public comment.
Well, I have a mix of crap.
Oh, okay. Let's see this works.
All right, so at least I'm not creating.
I have a Sharpie, that'll work.
I was gonna say Asperax, it's like a high quality.
I think it might be Larry's, I still love that stuff.
Oh, okay. Well, that case.
First, we have announcements. A public hearing to consider a local law, many, after 2/13, that let's go to a vehicle in traffic getting a stop sign. That's for April 16th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in Village Hall. That's pretty self-explanatory. It's on, I believe it's on Sunday cycling, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing if I get a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I will work on my reading skills and maybe I'll go down to now, therefore. I, Brian C. Smith, mayor of Village Verbs, and do hereby proclaim, April 27th, 2018, is Arbor Day in the villages of Irvington. I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our community forest programs. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being and present and future generations.
We're here.
Do you know yet if we're gonna be?
I don't know what the details are.
I imagine.
It's not snowing. Typically, we do, right?
They always update the years on the Broadway sign that says where the official Arbor.
Yes.
Arbor dream.
Tree City, USA.
Tree City, yes. Somebody magically changes the year. I don't think that is, but.
It's like McDonald's.
Close from 27.
We used to be over 19 billion, then they've had different billions.
Too much money, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, I remember.
So, Tree City since forever.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it was like, yeah, the first thing, I'm really good at it.
Does anybody have any other announcements? Did not? I'll move on to correspondence, of which there is none. I'll move on to public comment. Give it a downbeat, there is none. Consent agenda, any questions on the consent agenda?
I guess we should have a long discussion about the consent.
If not, I will make a motion to approve the consent. All in favor?
I changed my mind.
Okay, all right. Next, I will make a motion to open a public hearing to consider the 2018-19 operating budget if I can get a second.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm getting nervous, Brenda, I know she's a mom.
Just start throwing things.
So, we've now been working on the budget, I guess informally, for probably five, six months. Formally, for, I guess, the last three months or so with the public hearings and for each department. And now, we've gotten a semi, well, a tentative budget that was presented last week. But we have an update to that, which Brenda and Larry, just because we have to have a new budget, they didn't stop working. And we have some good news from the court treasurer.
Sure.
So, Brenda, I don't want to steal your thunder, I wanted to build it up.
I love to deliver good news. We had mentioned, Larry and I, we've been working on a sure with our current carrier as well as other carriers. So, we went to this other insurance agent that was involved, and they both went to the marketplace to put out the proposal for different models, same model. And what really came back is that the model that we have and the car deductibles, we planned on keeping with that, but it yielded tremendous savings. Not so much in our liability side, that was very much the same as previous years, but a slight savings. But it was really in our workers' compensation insurance. As you can recall, going back the past several years, it went up tremendously as a result of the experience we were having. Just like in your homeowner's rate, if you have an incident, your rates go up, while ours went up exponentially year over year. During those years, we did go out to the market and we did get bids, but they were coming back the same or higher. So, the last time we went out was two years ago. We had to lock in a negotiated amount, and that worked after that time being. But now, with our experience, has gone down, and we receive better rates from our current carrier and even better rates from another municipal candidate. So, it's a well-regarded firm. So, I did kind of a spreadsheet that shows the difference in the current rate that we're paying, what the owner agency quoted, or they went to the market. They probably went to, I guess, about seven different, several different carriers, maybe seven in total. And then, when our current carrier quoted for us, and then, another alternative is, we use PERMA right now, is a company called Workers' Comp Alliance. So, basically, what we're looking at is if you compare the, especially the workers' comp insurance, it's a savings of over $300,000 or about 45% in the rate. So, it's certainly a huge amount. And we want to really discuss it with you at this point and see how much you care to roll into the budget.
Yeah, so, the net numbers that we're looking at here, I know Brenda circulated a spreadsheet that showed a savings that would exceed $360,000. For discussion tonight, not all of that would hit the general fund, because some of that insurance and workers' compensation premiums are paid by the other funds, the water fund and the sewer fund. But once you allocate everything out, the net, net savings available tonight is $315,000. That would be savings on the liability side and a significant savings on the workers' comp side by switching to the Workers' Comp Alliance, which is that other carrier. And we're, you know, if you're looking for a staff recommendation, we're recommending that you switch to the carriers as presented, the Workers' Comp Alliance, and keep NYMER as your liability. So, the $315,000 is what's available in terms of savings. And now, the discussion is, so now, we framed it for you, now the discussion is how to handle that in your budget.
Well, you want to go back, though, just for the public's benefit, to see what we're at currently in our levy?
Right, so.
We haven't discussed it yet.
Yeah, I mean, again, to boil it down to actual tax numbers, the tentative budget proposed a tax rate, tax rate increase of 1.7. $315,000 would equate to a lowering of that by 2 and 1/4%. So, that would actually bring you at minus 0.5, minus a half percent in terms of a tax rate, if you took all of that savings as.
In one year?
As I just mentioned, right. All in one year.
Can I just ask, on the gallagher worksheet on the last page?
Yeah.
Sure.
In the one that's circled on the bottom, the total projected net cost?
Right.
For 769?
Right.
So, they have two numbers below that in terms of savings. One is the $282,000, which you've carried over onto the front page worksheet. But the other one is a much lower number than that, at a minimum savings. So, I guess my only question is, what's the difference and why are we using the higher number of the two on our estimate? I would imagine we're doing the same.
Firm that they were recommending yields a dividend, and they gave us a printout of the dividends that were given back to their, you know, companies that were participating in the program, going back to the past 20 years. And they did an aggregate of the premium rebate.
Right. So, it's, the carrier that they proposed for workers' compensation, you went in with a base premium, and then, depending on experience, you would, and that's experience of the entire group, you would, you would see a dividend returned to you. That's not guaranteed, of course, but they did show us a past history where the dividends were in the range of what they suggest here as their maximum savings, or, I'm sorry, projected savings. So, savings as if, assumes that there's no dividend payout at the end of the year. The projected savings is based upon the past history. Seemed to be conservative, I don't think there was any games being played or anything like that, it just seemed like a legitimate, but that's just the model.
So, Comp Alliance, even without any dividends coming back, we're still.
There won't be a dividend with Comp Alliance.
Right, but that number.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Did they, did they both look at our, our numbers over the past years and look at what the workman's comp was paid out and what kind of?
Yes, that's a part of, before they can give any kind of.
They have to.
Comp, we have to get the prior history.
To them.
To them, up until like the day before they bid.
Right.
So, we go back, so they had full disclosure of all the amounts. It's not just what's paid out, it's also the cost for litigation, the cost for administration. So, all those other costs, they were, or well, so they need all. So, we did a lot of work, working with the other insurance carrier, because we wanted the most accurate and best bid we could possibly get.
Oh, it's a completely level playing field, as far as these two proposals, you know, we made sure that each side had the same information.
Same information, they had to get square.
It's amazing how much different the workers' comp numbers are.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there any reason, any understanding why there's some different, different pool size?
Yeah, I don't know. We really don't. The Workers' Comp Alliance and PERMA are very similar in terms of carriers, in that they're, you know, a shared risk pool of municipalities, it's municipal only. The carrier that the alternate proposed, which is Geltvater, I forgot the name of the firm, it's a German sounding name. I don't think it's minis, it matters much, it's just that's what they chose to propose. So.
So, would it be, would this change, would it be fair to say that it's like a different model? No.
No, it's not.
No. We were looking at a model whereby we'd be self-insured, but with a cap on liability. That did not prove out to be cost-effective for us. The size of our operation would not be effective. So, that ultimately, that was not recommended. This is paying out from first dollar, so there's no additional exposure for the village any more than what we currently have.
Yeah, so it's identical, it's identical to what we have now, in terms of deductible levels, coverages, everything's identically the same. The savings is on the workers' comp, and it's really attributed to the, to the good experience that we've had in recent years. And, and I think, I think when, when our existing carrier was, was, and with some competition, it yielded these results. I mean, as simple as that. We wouldn't see these types of numbers if our experience hadn't turned positive the way.
Nor would we have seen these numbers if we hadn't poked there a little bit.
That's, that's part of, yeah, that, which bothers me frankly, but.
Right. Nor would we see these numbers if our experience changes non-poke.
Yeah, well, then, and that's, that's part of having a loss control program and a risk, you know, risk control, you know, within our organization. Doesn't mean that something bad can't happen, but, but we have, we're not an out-of-control organization. We've, you know, we have, we have a pretty good understanding of how to do things safely, so.
I do think we had like a bad three-year period of some major, with the ASO accident, and then there was, there was like two other.
Couple other back injuries, yes.
It was just kind of a, you know, a bad string of luck there.
Yeah, I mean, we went, you know, two years ago, we had some issues with our premiums, and we went back and tried to work something out, and the savings just weren't there, our existing.
Question for experience.
Because our experience wasn't good, now, now it is.
Exactly. We've been good for long enough.
Right, and they didn't come to us, and you know, you've been so good.
Yeah.
Well, we're here.
And we have a program also, which we.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what would be the downside of taking it all this year and coming up with a tax deduction to make us so far?
Right, so, I mean, I think, I think there's some potential for the workers' comp premium to have been lowballed a little bit. Probably a little more of a discount than we might have otherwise gotten, you know, make sure they got the business or whatever.
Now, apparently, any of the prior claims, they stay with the old carrier.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's not that, I mean, but, but assuming everything stays level, you know, maybe there, maybe the discount percentage that they're all, the year is not as, as rich. So, maybe you have, you know, a, I don't know, 10% or 15% increase next year in your workers' comp premium, I don't know what it would be. Let's say it's 30, 30, 40,000, whatever. You know, you, you'd have to deal with that next year, you know, the tax cap goes from year to year, and you don't get to have a do-over. So, whatever you give up now, you have to go from dollar, dollar zero next year in your increases. But, having said that, I think.
We talked about a middle ground, which is to take all the savings on the insurance and, you know, bring the actual tax levy piece down, or the expenditure piece down. But then, maybe not use as much of the fund balance and kind of bring that back in line with what we had next year, so we don't start, you know, hurt that.
Because we increased fund balance by 75,000.
Which, I mean, I didn't have a problem with that, because, dollars, and you were getting to the point where we're gonna get a little slap on the wrist that we have too much in fund balance. But if we're anticipating, you know, a 15, 25,000 dollar increase in the tax next year, we can use fund balance to offset that, you know, the workers' comp piece that we kind of expect to go up next year. So, we think that that's kind of maybe a middle ground, and I think it tells a good story where, that we kept the fund balance the same, we took all the insurance savings, and it means it's an easier thing to kind of explain than taking, taking half of the, the insurance, and I guess it's a little cleaner, I think.
Right, and you're not, you're not using extra fund balance or appropriating extra fund balance in your budget just to get to zero, you know what I mean? Because that's essentially what, or just to get below zero or whatever. So, that kind of takes that argument away.
We are sort of using a one-time benefit to help get to zero.
It's recurring, huh? Recurring every year.
Yeah. Or distinction.
A certain annual increase might happen, but it's.
But we're not gonna save, but we're not gonna have.
300,000 savings next year.
$300,000 next year.
No, but we might, but 275,000.
No, but we're starting off from where.
The cost is lower, yeah, the overall, so it's, it is, that is not like a one-time, like savings on.
Right.
On that, it is.
It's not like we sold an asset off and got, you know, $300,000, and we're using it to lower the tax rate, then next year, you're not selling any more assets.
Or insurance recovery.
This is a real reduction.
This is, no, this is an annual, we're, this is, yeah.
And what we can predict is that there will be huge claims, workers' comp or other claims, but we have no control over that anyway.
Right.
Or what the market will look like next year, even if we have a good experience.
And you, but the, but the important thing is that, yeah, that those are all uncertainties about what your premiums are gonna be next year and any of your other costs for that matter. But you have, you have a healthy reserve, you have a healthy surplus, and that's what it's for.
So, can you explain one more time, looking at next year, in terms of trying to get in under whatever the cap is gonna be, whatever, say it's this year's cap? What game, where is the money coming from, what games are we playing? Are we doing anything this year that's gonna hurt us next year? That's the question.
As far as the cap?
Hurts.
As far as trying, yeah, as far as trying to make, you know, at a reasonable tax rate.
We'll have the same carryover, the carryover.
The only, the only argument, the only argument about hurting yourself, if you will, I mean, look, you're talking about a 0% increase here, that's great. So, that's, that's a good.
That's where we're coming out for 0%?
I think that's what we're, that's what the current discussion is.
It's almost exactly zero for the year, so instead of 1.76, it's almost another.
It would be flat, yeah.
It's about flat, even if you take, even if you reduce.
And that gives us how much into the fund balance that we're not spending?
About 75,000.
75,000 would be removed from, which was the amount you had pushed it up a little bit, you know, this, yeah, so you would go back down to what you used last year. But if.
Crystal ball.
Yeah, no, so, so if there's a, if there's a negative or a slightly not conservative thing going on here, and that is that you would be so far under that you wouldn't be able to carry forward all of what you're under, there's a limit to what you can carry forward to use for next year, okay? So, and that, that limit is 1.5% of your, of your tax levy. So, so we'll be able to carry forward 1.5%.
A half a percent tax levy?
Yeah, it's even, it's even a little bit, it's even more than that.
Right.
It's.
I had the number, but I don't have it.
Yeah, we can come up with the exact numbers, but there's.
It says that savings are like 241,000 dollars.
So, the carryover.
We'd have to raise people's taxes to be able to carry over more of them.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd better have lower taxes and lose the advantage.
Listen, I didn't ask that question that way, Mark did, but, but I'm answering, you're right, that's, the answer is, you'd have to artificially, that's the way the tax cap works. You'd have to keep your tax rate up higher artificially, and look, we're all at a public meeting, we're saying, I'm saying. Higher. You'd get the full benefit of the roll forward, and then, next year, if you had some major issues confronting you, which, I mean, can happen, of course, you'd have the benefit of the roll forward, plus you'd have the benefit of the fact that you kept your budget up artificially higher, so now you can bring it down in those areas. It's, it's, it's pretty perverse, but that's the way the tax cap works. So, I, I mean, I'm not gonna apologize for how the equation works.
There's no rebate to the residents, though, for staying. So, that argument has gone away, except we just try to.
On no more rebates?
Not based on the village tax, no.
No.
So, I'm gonna ask a different question, and that is, if we're gonna do this, would it be possible to look at adding any funds here and there? And I'll tell you specifically, and then.
Why, you look at your colleagues. I'm just cleaning my glasses, sorry.
Fair view.
At the closest.
Yeah.
We're listening.
So, anyways, well, the two, remember that the close of our last discussion, I was saying I really thought it was important that we had some tree maintenance fund for the, and I know you were gonna look into it, did that get in?
Yeah, I think we took care of that before the, before the tentative was released.
Okay, I didn't go back and double-check, I apologize.
We did.
The other thing that I realized that we didn't have anymore, and it's something that maybe we could talk about, or maybe it's something that's just operational budget, is that now that the Green Policy Task Force is starting to talk about a lot of public education outreach have a program, is it possible to put a couple thousand in for them for funding, you know, their educational outreach, whatever it is? I'm pretty sure we removed that a couple of years ago, when we were cutting the bones of, cutting all the flesh off.
I think it wasn't used.
They still had an unused fund balance, however.
Do they?
They, they, based on my recollection.
We didn't take that from them?
No. They have stuff in trust and agency where it rolls over from year to year, and that was just the results of grant money proceeds from.
Yeah, and how much is that, I'm sorry.
There was things from the Earth Day 40 vendors fair that was in my second year as trustee.
That all started back from Earth Day.
Yeah, as I just said, Earth Day 40's vendor fair brought in income.
Oh, well, so if there's still money like that, then forget what I'm saying, because that really should be spent out.
Yeah, also, given this wonderful, I would hesitate to look at it as Santa's bag on Christmas morning and see what we, you know, I think if we come out with this wonderful result, let's go with it.
Yeah, I just, that's why I was just saying, you know, I thought something like a 2,000.
But I, I think.
Item wasn't that big a deal, but if it's, if the money's elsewhere, then we really should get them to spend it down, there's no reason why it needs to, you know, collect dust.
Yeah, because it.
Yeah, I mean, this is, there's still the capital budget and ideas for the capital budget, which isn't part of this, that are, not that particular thing you just brought up, but, you know, that's another discussion that starts again whenever that starts. But, not tomorrow, at 9:00 tonight.
Money.
Okay.
So, we'll confirm, we'll confirm that there's money in there remaining for GPTF to use. If there isn't, we'll report back that there isn't, and maybe you can slip a little bit in there. I do think that there's intentions to do some mailings, I know, you know, the, the mailers that are going out now, the water bills, for example, I know that's not GPTF, but it's sort of, kind of.
It is sort of, kind of.
And it's, you know, that's $800 worth of flyers, so there's, the things, if you do a couple of mailings, you're up at a couple thousand dollars pretty easily, so.
Otherwise, it comes out of operational funds or.
Yeah, yeah, without any particular designation, which you're better off, if it's something, listen, I'm all, I was all in favor of taking that 2,000 out of the budget when it was coming out, because no one was using it, frankly. But I'm all in favor of putting it back if someone's gonna use it, you know.
Well, I, I agree with the, the other comment, which is if it's, if there's money sitting in the kitty somewhere, you know, let's, let's spend that down, because Earth Day 40 was quite a while ago, so I don't know what we're doing, because.
Getting ready for 50.
Not me, sorry.
That's true.
Well, but thank you, this is wonderful news.
It is wonderful.
We're delighted, we had the RFP, we did an RFP, a limited one, back in January, and the results came in just after we did the budget, you know, at the same time. It was the first meeting we could record.
Nice work.
Good news.
Yeah, I have, if we, if we take the 315 this year, Larry, and we reduce the fund balance to 176, it's like a 0.07%.
Yeah.
I mean, that's basically flat.
Yeah.
But the other thing we said, we have discussed kind of timing, and then county, I briefly spoke about this as well.
Brenda, 5,700.
5,700.
Green Policy Task Force.
Oh, I have.
That's plenty, that's plenty of mailings.
Yes.
Excuse me.
It's kind of interesting, all these.
So, I think what we were saying is, we could, we could try to, you know, we could double-check my numbers tonight, and Larry and Brenda already kind of did them on the back of the envelope. But we figured that since the outpouring of concern hasn't exactly been huge so far, as well as the fact we're bringing it lower now, I don't anticipate a lot of pushback on the budget, but it is a holiday week, people are wacky, and we are changing it kind of last minute.
Yeah, there's a couple of complexities.
Maybe we'll wait till Tuesday, just vote on it then. I don't think we'll need a lot of discussion, to be honest, we'll just get a revised copy and hope for that.
Then I have to just look at the allocations of how the insurance plays out.
Right, because it's in different, different funds.
Close through into the other funds.
Exactly, right, so I think it's, I think it makes sense, but I feel more comfortable having that front all. Yeah, we'll double-check it again.
Definitely, yeah.
So, I mean, I think, I mean, I, don't let me speak for everyone, but I think we're all on the same page in what we, I kind of plan.
Well, I'm not suggesting we jump up and down and do our, you know, give ourselves huge pats on the back, nevertheless, we did say we wanted to minimize the tax.
We need a good soundbite.
Burden, and yeah, so this should, this should be very much publicized once we finally adopt.
Yeah, I agree.
Unfortunately, we're only 23% of the, or whatever it is, 23%, whatever the percentage of the overall tax.
Maybe minus 25.
We really go down.
I started, oh, I just said unfortunately, meaning that.
If we ran, if we could run the whole. We're running two state offices next year, yeah.
No, but I'm also not running for school board.
Yeah. So, should we just keep the public hearing open then?
Yeah.
Sure.
If anyone else has anything else to talk about the budget, I mean, we've talked about it quite a bit.
Right, you were adding 5,700, is that what you said?
No, no, no.
No, it's in there.
No, that's what's in the, that's what's in the trust account.
No.
They still have it.
Okay.
I don't know how you found it.
Larry found it.
Larry found it.
Okay, you did, okay, good.
So, we're good.
I'll log in.
That's right. So, yeah, I was already logged in, so that's why.
No, so we'll, so we'll come back with a revised budget, you'll see the numbers, and hearings open, and do it on the 16th.
And I don't think public typically cares that much when you revise it down after it is released, so.
Yeah, no, it's a good thing.
Brenda, Larry, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all that research, for sure.
Keep poking those bears.
I will make a motion to open public hearing to consider a local law, amending the zoning code to permit home occupations in one-family villages in the business district as an accessory use. If I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings now open. Floor is yours.
Okay. Do you have the, this to close the hole right now in the zoning regulations for the business district? Throughout the village, not only one family districts, a permitted accessory use in single-family homes is a home occupation, professional homeowners is home occupation. Now, that isn't listed as permitted accessory use in business district, because the business district doesn't list single-family houses as permitted use. There are, however, some single-family houses in the business district, they're, they are pre. pre-existing zoning or pre-existing legal nonconformities, and what this does is it, it adds to the permitted uses in the business district, a new sub-paragraph, in legal nonconforming one-family dwellings, accessory home occupations, provided that they meet the requirements of 22481, and those are the requirements for home occupations and the rest of them. And while, while I was doing that, we had, in the last couple of years, enacted two amendments to the business, in the business district, and one to permit in-law apartments and any other accessory apartments, and we just said in one-family dwellings, and I was looking at it, made me a little bit nervous that people might say, hey, one-family dwellings are permitted use in the business district, so I would just add to those paragraphs, in legal nonconforming one-family dwellings, in legal nonconformities, and that's what this amendment's all about.
That, that's good.
So just basically saying, one-family houses, even if you happen to be in the business district, can do what other one-family houses can do.
Do elsewhere, right.
I don't know if it can do everything, but, you know, but...
They can do these things that...
Home occupation, yes, come off as a mission.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how many total single-family homes there are, but there are, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it might be seven.
Yeah.
We got the one, yeah.
We don't, well, I don't know how many legal noncon...
I think that, the number seven is sticking in my head, it was seven.
That's kind of reasonable.
It's not a big number, but, you know, at least one of them did want to use it, do this, and couldn't, because the way the code's written now.
I think this is local government doing what it should do, figuring it out and solving it. Thank you.
You're great.
Larry, we'll reach out to that panel.
Yeah, oh yeah, sure, yep.
Well, we're not voting tonight, right?
I think you are.
Yeah.
We are?
If you close the public hearing.
Because we hadn't made any changes to it, and it was already, it was already noted.
Nobody knows, it was announced last, last meeting.
Yep.
Been published, and we haven't gotten any comments back, there's no public in the audience tonight, so I will make a motion to close the public hearing, if I can have a second. All in favor? Aye. Resolve to adopt a local amending the zoning code to permit home occupations in one-family dwellings in the business district as accessory use, so I'll make a motion, can I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Declaring a public emergency in connection with the Irvington Fire Department roof replacement project. Larry, would you like to detail the saga here?
We got two good things in a row now, I know this, so, yeah, so, the, the, well, you all can see what's going on over there, the contractor's been terminated, the contractor was not performing on the roof replacement, and they, the bond company has been...
Let me see, it's up front.
We, we, a home occupation, right?
I am a lot of patients.
They just finished it.
We just hit it.
You're a good one.
Yes.
This is a pre-existing, not growing, single...
So you're done.
So we didn't even have to reach out to you, I'm like, we did it.
My only question was, I saw it, it said one family on the agenda, does it also apply to two-family?
No.
Not the two-family?
No, because in two-family houses, it's not permitted use, it's only permitted use in one family, but I, but, yes.
Yeah.
So, if, if you have a two-family house that you're using as a one-family house...
Yeah, so it doesn't...
You talk to the building department, you make sure that it's complying as a one-family house, and you're...
I understand, okay.
Great.
Well, it's time to listen to the fire department roof.
Talk about efficient government. When he walks in, it's very good.
It's like, I might not be back until 10 o'clock.
My wife, we won't know. We want to go do something.
No, this is all fair.
Go celebrate it, you're welcome.
Thanks, everybody.
You bet.
Thanks.
Yeah, resaw it.
Okay, so, so the performance bond company has been bought in, they have the option to complete the project on their own, like what happened here for Town Hall, bring in their own contractors, whatnot, but in this case, it's a very small project for them, and so they're, they are going to be proposing to buy us out, so they'll, they'll look at what it costs to complete, and we'll negotiate a, an amount that they'll pay us, so that we can then turn around and hire a contractor to complete the job. The, once we learned of that, that means that we now have to turn around and quote-unquote "rebid" it, but because of the nature of the project, it's really quite difficult to rebid in the classic sense, in the legal sense in New York State, so we're actually are going to be bringing in contractors and accepting proposals to finish out the work. We're going to invite them in, take a look, see what they see, use their best judgment, and give us a price. It's a little different than a sealed bid in, in terms of New York State, so we are asking you, and, and really, time is of the essence because of that, so we're asking you to, to really make it formal to declare it a public emergency, so that we can bypass some of those particular rules, not that we're just going with one price, but, you know, that we'll be able to bring in multiple prices and kind of pick and choose with who we want, if, especially...
That's the way that I'm required to take the lowest bid in this situation.
Correct, and, and also, we, we need to look at the, at the price in conjunction with the contractor's schedule, there's a, you know, a correlation of, hopefully, there'll be a sweet spot there where we can afford it, and it's fast, so, we'll see.
Are we bringing in people who would previously bid on the project?
In a few cases, yes, but more, we're actually bringing in contractors that we have specific recommendations from either our architect, or our building inspector, or, you know, internally, but contractors that we know and have worked with before.
Track record.
Yeah, so...
And it is quite a serious problem, as far as the fire department is concerned, I think.
Yeah, the upstairs is actually completely stripped now, so they can't even, like, their, their annual meeting where they vote in the chiefs and things, is, the Artsy Country Club was nice enough to say they could have it there, which I thought was pretty generous, so...
After all that?
Yes, after all, fires there, but, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's, the upstairs is basically, it's not usable, so you get the roof, and you have to redo upstairs, so it's, I mean, I think this, this isn't like a window dressing they call an emergency, the fire department building is not usable, I mean, luckily, the trucks are dry, but that's about it, so...
So what happened with this contractor?
You want to tell the whole story? They just, they, no, they, they, it's very simple, they, they failed to perform, they, they weren't paying subcontractors, they weren't paying for materials, the work ground to a halt, and here we are.
Do we know why? I mean, they did pass a D and B, you know...
And they got a performance bond, too, which is, you know, and it's probably, it's going to be a lot harder to get next time, so...
Yeah, I think we couldn't have been, I mean, we were concerned, we were concerned about the bid, how much, how competitive it was, and, you know, I think we did everything we could, including having additional oversight, so it was, this was kind of the, making the best of a, you know, have a bad situation, but, you know, it's, it's still, I think, was, I think, I think it was also, some of it was the weather was not doing help.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't have been the weather.
Should not have.
In other words, it should have been done well in advance of the, the weather going bad right after Christmas, so, it should have been done by Thanksgiving.
Agreed.
Which time the weather wasn't bad.
Anyway.
So...
So is there any way in the future that we're looking, I mean, because we've had that problem with Village Hall now with the contractors, so is there something in our process of evaluating that we're not seeing? I mean, it's easy in hindsight to say that, you know, but I'm wondering if, you know...
Yeah, I don't...
I think part of it's the whole lowest bidder thing, yeah, is that we have to take the lowest responsibility.
We couldn't, we couldn't not, either, well, we weren't trying to knock out necessarily any of the bidders, but we couldn't have if we wanted to, there, there, the references checked out, the finances checked out, especially in the case of Town Hall, but, you know, there are lots of reasons why the one on Town Hall went bad, they're, they went bankrupt, by the way, I mean, that, you know, but it was through a series of very bad decisions on other projects, to be perfectly honest, they were looking for our project to help supplement those other bad projects, and we weren't going to have that. This project here, I, I can't tell you, I, I don't think, I don't think there was enough money in the project for them to finish it to begin with, but we also couldn't prove that, you know, we tried to give them enough rope to hang themselves, and they didn't, and, and they could have gotten off the job if they wanted to, but we otherwise couldn't come up with a reason to throw them out legally.
Well, I mean, okay, just pull that thread a little bit more, but if we have a building department and village engineers, I mean, they couldn't have done like a ballpark estimate, they do do ballpark estimates, don't they, for projects?
Yeah, well, we had an architect on this, and the architect did not say that the price was exceedingly low, was it low? Yeah, it was low, but it wasn't exceedingly low to be able to throw them out legally, at least in their estimation, so...
Well, I'm glad there are procedures in place, you know, for each one, it's a certain circumstance, and then we look at it, and we figure out how to deal with it, and in this case, this emergency declaration seems like a smart way to go and solve that problem and move on, I get your point, Mark.
I don't, I mean, I was saying, is, isn't, there isn't, there isn't, but...
Yes, there is, I mean, the contractor with the crossing, I think, has gone very well.
I was surprised the architect wouldn't have liked it, you know, frankly, and said, this is under, you know, under by what my professional estimate would be.
Yeah, I mean, it was, like I said, it was low, but it wasn't exceedingly low, it just, it wasn't enough to justify knocking out, and look, I, I'm, for what it's worth, I, I have never been involved in a project that's had a performance bond called, except for these last two.
After 20...
Just saying.
Right, some years.
So, you could say I'm on a losing streak, but, but, whatever.
Does it affect the village going forward, for getting performance bonds, or is it...
No, we don't get them.
They carry their own, right?
Yeah, it's their risk, that's why, that, that's why you don't, when you have, when you require performance bonds, you don't see contractors throwing around ridiculously low numbers just to get a job, because if they actually can't perform, the bond has to be called, and as we said before, it's going to be a lot more difficult, or a lot more expensive for them to get a performance bond in the future.
Right.
So why, why someone would do that, I don't know, but...
Things happen.
Yep.
So, I mean, I think this was one where we definitely weren't surprised, it was eyes wide open, you know, I think we did everything we could to ensure this wouldn't happen.
Tried to drag them over the finish line, that's the bottom one.
Yeah, so I remember I was actually here when we, when we unsealed those pits, for some reason, I was meeting with you.
Oh, were you? Oh, okay.
It really happens, they really do unseal the bits.
So you're saying you're a jinx, is that reasonable?
Keep him away.
You're not allowed here anymore. Whereas the current roof of the fire department is in need of a replacement, and whereas the fire department cannot be used in this present state, a result of inadequate work being performed by the contractors selected to repair it, and whereas immediately, immediate replacement of the roof is required in order to use the fire department, and to prevent further issues associated with an open roof, such as flooding and interior damage to the fire department, and whereas the Board of Trustees finds that the state of the fire department is a public emergency, and whereas the Board of Trustees desires to retain contractors to complete the project in order to resolve the public emergency, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees declares a public emergency with respect to the state of the fire department, and be it further resolved that because of this public emergency, immediate actions required and the completion of the project cannot await competitive bidding, be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees is authorized to retain contractors to complete the project, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees is authorized, empowered, and directed to take any and all actions to execute and deliver any and all instruments in order to effect the foregone resolutions, and be it further resolved that the village administrator is authorized, empowered, and directed to take all, any and all actions to execute and deliver any and all instruments in order to effect the foregone resolution. I will make a motion, can I get a second? All in favor?
I feel like we should all have red hats.
Fire hats on.
Get the blue and white on.
Authorizing participation in the Sustainable Westchester Clean Transportation Program. Would you like to, Larry, leave us on here?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is really, it essentially allows us to be involved in future cooperative bids that are organized by cooperating municipalities under the Sustainable Westchester umbrella, so, you know, I don't, electric vehicles is one of the areas that certainly could be covered by it.
Alternate fuel?
Yeah, and so, it, it does not, it only enables us to participate, it doesn't bind us to doing anything particularly, and, so we'll see where that leads us, I don't, I don't actually have anything right now that I'm in the market for, but we'll see what happens.
Have you had a part of this before?
No, this only came around recently, yeah.
Yeah, I think only one.
I know Bedford was in...
The time we got it, only one municipality had signed on, it was the same group that we got into the other, the, uh...
Community choice aggregation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just going to start with the, the resolution card.
You're going to read this whole thing, are you?
It'll explain it, yeah.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby determines that it is in interest of the village of Irvington to participate in the SW AFP, hereby authorized and directed those administrators sign the agreement on the participant's behalf, further authorize participants, officers, employees to execute such other documents, and takes such other actions that may be necessary is appropriate to carry out the intent of the resolution, and be it further resolved that the participant agrees to participate in future municipal corporate cooperative bids pursuant to the agreement, and subject to subsequent rule about this board, and be it further resolved that the participant authorize administrative agent, in accordance with the requirements of the general municipal law prepared, to submit any necessary or desirable advertising invitation to bid, or fleet aggregate purchase of EVs and other alternative fuel equipment, or request for proposals containing appropriate details and bid specifications the administrative agent deems appropriate to solicit offers from car dealers or manufacturers interested in offering AF equipment purchase and/or these solutions to participant and its constituents, and co-marketing the availability of such solutions with the participant, or to accept or reject any real bids, and be it further resolved that the actions of the administrative agent here to take and on half of participant in connection with the preparation and issuance of the request for proposals are hereby ratified and approved, and be it further resolved that the officers, employees, and participant are authorized to execute such other documents and takes such other actions that may be necessary or appropriate to carry out the intended resolution. I will make a motion, if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then this one with like seven pages of backup, and so I can, because you wrote this one, but, or Larry wrote it.
I didn't, what, this one?
No, 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 Mercy College one, this is a big document, but it has a very short resolution.
Right, right.
I have four lines for a 70-page document, but the resolution's longer than the actual agreement, but, next is approval of agreement with Mercy College for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the sidewalk along Hudson Road West. We're getting there, Larry.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, we're, it's a little puzzle, so, as you know, there's a, a new sidewalk planned from the Artsley train station up to the Mercy College pathway, and then the Mercy College pathway into their campus, that's their business, but Mercy College and the village have been working very closely over the last year and a half, probably, or maybe more, to try to come to agreement on how that sidewalk is going to get constructed, and the complexities are that it is on or near a piece of Hudson House property, which you recently approved a, an agreement with Hudson House for that, it's also on and near Metro North property, which we're awaiting approval from Metro North for all of those activities, so this is another piece of the puzzle that we're asking you to approve, and then we'll all be waiting for Metro North at that point, which is where we want it to be.
As so many people do every day.
Exactly.
Well said, well said.
So, but it's, they're working on it, we know that, and we're, we're making sure So, but it's, they're working on it. We know that. Um, and we're, we're making sure of that. So, um, but basically the, the summary of this, um, is that Mercy College will be, uh, has designed, uh, and has added in a few elements that the village needed to be in there, like some drainage matters. Um, but they've, they've designed this entire pathway, which our engineers have reviewed and find acceptable. Um, and the, uh, construction of the, of the path will be divided on a proportionate basis to how much is adjacent to our property, uh, or Metro North or Hudson House, and how much is adjacent to Mercy's college property or on their property entirely. They're required under their special permit to build a sidewalk, uh, the, the full length of their property, which goes pretty far down Hudson Road West. If you don't know, uh, it's, it's probably half or more of the way down the hill from their pathway, uh, at the top of the hill. It's probably halfway to the train station. That's still their property. So they'll be paying for a hundred percent of that. We'll be paying for a hundred percent of it from there to the train station. And the current cost breakdown, uh, as shown in this agreement, probably on page seventy or so, is, uh, is a breakdown attributable to the village of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, which is about forty to fifty thousand dollars less than what we had planned on it costing. For years, we've wanted to build this. We thought it would be about a two hundred thousand dollar project, two hundred, by now it's two twenty, two thirty. Um, so this is a, this is a good project if it all comes together. It's just been much more complicated than we ever thought.
We thought it would be complicated.
Well.
We thought it would be.
Until we found out it was on Hudson House land and then, you know, Metro North and all that. So, um, the agreement covers a variety of other topics. Mary Ann could outline the whole thing, but it essentially, it, it defines who takes care of the, of the pathway, which is Mercy College. Um, it also defines who, um, pays for the electricity for the lighting on the pathway, which is also Mercy College. Um, and, and then we pay our share for construction. So that's essentially what this whole agreement lays out.
We pay for drainage.
And we pay for the drainage work specifically. There's, there's some work at the top of the hill that is, uh, that was requested by our engineers in order to handle things correctly up there. And then there's some drainage work at the bottom of the hill near the powerhouse building, but which is owned by Hudson House. It was a request and, uh, from, from Hudson House and it's actually what you might call compensation for their easement agreement that we negotiated. So it's, it's all being done at the same time. And makes a lot of sense too, by the way. So keeps, uh, some water off the roadway that often freezes. So.
It looks like some of the lighting, the cost of the lighting fixtures was altered.
Yes. Yeah, that, so there was a series of negotia, I don't have to go into all the back and forth on that, but there was a series of negotiations relating to the cost of the lighting. And, um, the initial position that we took was that the village was not planning on putting lighting in for the pathway. We were going to rely on the street lighting, which is fairly limited there. But, um, but, um, future negotiations were such that we traded the one-time capital cost for the ongoing cost of maintenance of those lights and the payment of the electricity going, but forever. So I thought that was a good trade-off and it broke a stalemate.
They're just paying the lights on our portion.
We're, we're only paying for the lights. There's five fixtures that are actually on our portion of the sidewalk, you know, adjacent to our property or Hudson House or Metro North. And so we're paying for the installation of those fixtures, but none of the future costs.
Great. So why not losing any parking spaces?
No. Not permanently. Temporarily.
That's why we're going to try to get this done in the summer.
It's, oh yeah, this, this work has to get done starting at the end of June.
So we'd be telling Metro, Larry told Metro North that as well. So.
Oh yeah, they know.
We're waiting for their lawyers.
We told them that last year.
Yeah, no kidding.
Last summer. So.
Yeah. So Mercy College is looking to go out to bid. You know, they have a different process than we do, but they're looking to get prices starting in the middle of April. Um, hopefully get a contractor lined up to start their work on their property towards the end of May, which is when their campus really closes down. You know, their, their classes are done. Um, and then hopefully by then we have all the approvals necessary for Metro North and they can start doing the work adjacent to our parking spaces. You know, some of those will have to come out of service.
So are we, you know, I looked at the pictures that I.
Sorry.
So are we building our sidewalk into the dirt part of that road or onto the street and narrowing the?
Into the hillside. So they're in front of the parking spaces.
Seems like quite an engineering.
Yes.
It is, yeah.
And I just walked there yesterday and I looked at, I couldn't figure out.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of grading work that has to happen. So, you know, to, for that hillside there. And, um, you know, some tree removals, but, but the, the grading work is extending on and into Metro North property.
Yes.
As well as Hudson House property. So it's, yeah. It's a lot of work.
But such a good project.
It's a great, listen.
So unsafe.
If you stand down there any time of day, well, not on a weekend, but if you stand down, down there during the week, I mean, we, we had meetings out on site and there's, there's, you know, dozens of kids walking in both directions from campus.
And, and not just kids, you know.
No, right.
The only place you can walk down is behind the cars.
Yeah.
And in bad weather, it's just awful.
Yeah.
Have to put tables, pull beer and sit outside the tables, playing loud music after hours.
So there's a, there are fair, I'm, I'm under the impression there are a fair number of Irvington homeowners who use that station, who will use that sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, if he, if he's all, all the scooter cars.
Yeah, that's when you walk to the parking, they literally walk in the middle of the street.
From their car to behind, so they're not right in the middle.
Yeah.
And the lighting is better. So walking is better in that neighborhood. Lighting is better in that neighborhood. And that seems like a win-win both for Mercy and for us, our residents.
I'm just worried for the outside people who just want to walk on the sidewalk.
Well, it will be part of, it will be part of Riverwalk if, if the county ever says we want to lift that section. The fifty feet that's on Metro North property absolutely will be part of Riverwalk. The rest of it is up to Mercy.
I've been putting my hand up for Riverwalk for nine and a half years. So this could be, this could be the, the bra.
Yeah.
It just, one question, because I also am really not good with the drawings. It goes as far as the, the one platform entrance, the, the southern.
The southern platform entrance, yes. Yep.
Okay. Looking at pictures down there, John?
I have full, I mean, we can make full-size sets for you.
I might, I just want them up on the screen tonight.
I didn't anticipate that. Sorry.
Is Mark drawing a picture for me?
I can send you the PDS for God's sakes. You can look at it on your own computer. I mean, just, you know, whatever.
No, I walked here yesterday and the, the engineering to me is still like.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's why, that's why I wasn't an engineer.
Yeah, it's a, that's, uh.
I was going to draw a white line on the street.
Right.
Now, who, well, at one time there was a discussion that it was going to narrow the road by having to move the parking spaces. Is that still happening or is this because you went back into negative space effectively?
Yeah. Yeah, there were a few different options we explored and that, and this one.
That one made the most sense. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So Mary Ann, you've been intimately involved with this over.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no. I mean, Mercy's been, you know, very good to deal with, I mean, you know, and, uh, and Hudson House as well.
Yeah.
And.
Metro North is.
Metro North, I've been to deal with this.
Don't show up.
It's like dealing with no one.
Yeah, it's hard. Yeah, there's two, we need, we need a temporary work permit or an entry permit, they call it. And then we need a permanent easement where the sidewalk's actually going to be on their property. And both of those things are taking a while. Now, uh, it's really the permanent easement that's holding everything up. The work permit's ready to go, but they've been told not to release it until the, until the permanent easement's in place and they have everything they need in there.
The good thing though is Mercy can start though on the top part.
Oh, they can start.
But it's on their property. Yeah.
Yeah.
And just so you know, the agreements were all drafted by outside drafted the agreements both with, and, and so they're, they're going along. Not that they have, you know, made some changes, but it's not like, you know, we handed documents.
Well, even before you said, I was going to say this agreement is a model of just crap.
Well, I knew you were going to say that. I just wanted to get my crap in.
But it didn't, it doesn't have like, and whereas the board, it's just like a straightforward. It's clear. It reads like this is good for everybody. It's like a warrior didn't like it.
Yeah. Yeah, we found in, in these things that, um, very often when there's complicated transactions like this, it's easier for us to put out the first document and then let others comment. It just tends to work out better, you know?
Excellent.
Well, no, but.
Attorney.
For that reason, yes. But I mean, it just.
No, it isn't just that. It's because people take these stock things. They take stock agreements and make them work and it.
It never worked.
Confuses everything.
Which is red wine. I pay more than somebody changes.
So there you have it.
Okay.
Well, this is a great project.
A second.
Resolve to approve an agreement with Mercy College for the construction, operation and maintenance of a sidewalk along Hudson Road West. And authorize the mayor to execute said agreement and to authorize the village administrator, village attorney to execute any additional documents necessary to complete said transaction. I'll make the motion. I believe we have a second from trustee Gilman.
Yes, sorry, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now the big filming permit and the big detective division.
You can, I mean, you can just read the resolution. It's pretty straightforward.
I don't know how much we're running from this going to cover expenses, you know, one on one time.
Yeah, no, it's not going to work. Not going to get you too far.
They'll have a flag man in there the whole time, which is good. Someone directing traffic. Uh, resolve to approve a filming permit for Patricia White for filming at the Irvington Police Department on April twenty ninth, twenty eighteen from ten AM to two PM with the heat wave. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just, just before eight o'clock, just saying.
Seven, change seven.
No.
No, it's nine, but.
But you have to do it, huh?
Reports of board standing committees and officers.
I won't be home till nine.
Trustee liaison reports. Mark?
I don't have anything on that. I don't have it. I don't have anything. I'm still waiting to meet, uh, to get caught up to speed with Ann and the kind of, uh, uh, what do they call it? A steering committee for the GTPF so I can see, GPTF so I can see what they're up to. Um, there has been quite a bit of email going back and forth, a lot of ideas. So they are, uh, refreshing their membership. So there should be some information going to Larry on that. Tree commission, all I know at the moment besides their own business is that, uh, Alan, I think is, has he met with you yet to talk about, uh, the trees, tree wells, uh, just moving that forward?
Yeah. No, I, I want to, but I, I have not met with him.
Right.
But no, I.
I know you had a busy week or two, but.
Yeah, no, we need to identify locations and, you know, just get that all ready. But everything's on order. So it's not, nothing can happen yet.
And agree on that, whoever's going to sort of monitor, oversight, monitor, whatever it is, to be sure that the stuff is being planted correctly.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, cool. That's it for now. I pass with the baton.
Just a couple of things. The Irvington Woods Committee will be holding a trails cleanup on Saturday, April fourteenth. Contact direct department for more information. Uh, a reminder of the, the face event on Saturday, April twenty eighth. That is now at seven thirty, I believe. Larry Campbell and Theresa Williams. And Spring Fest will be Saturday, the eighteenth, and plans are in full swing. Be there or be square.
Oh, we are so dated. I speak for myself, Larry.
That's it? You're hanging out on that one?
I think you, I think you should do the Spring Fest, you know, be square or don't be square.
We'll call it a sock hop, too.
Oh, yeah, sock hop. Um, I don't have anything from Greg or Jim Englishbee and, uh, I just would say as always, there are events at the theater even before you, the Face fundraiser. Um, and I think the film, special film, uh, the as if film shorts is not this week, next week. Uh, but I'm going, so I already know I can't go.
No, it's something this week.
Yeah, this is a, this is a common ground this week. Yeah. I mean, people should keep, they should just click on that and look at what is on every weekend. It's like surprising if it's not something that you like. So anyway, that's it.
So what is on this weekend?
It's a common ground. Um.
I'm on the Hitchcock.
It's a folky kind of performer. But again, I'm going, so I have to keep it. Yeah. Okay.
Very efficient. Uh, village administrator's report?
Uh, just real quick. I had, I did have a, a meeting with a couple of members of the aforementioned GPTF, um, last week to talk about, um, the village's, uh, attempt to come up with a greenhouse gas inventory or some baseline. Uh, so Francis O'Shea and, and Anne Jaffey Holmes I met with and, uh, it was a very productive meeting. So looking forward to that.
Uh, village treasurer's report?
Anything else?
Anything else?
We've been working on the programs to convert our financial programs.
It was spare time.
My spare time. Uh, the first module is going to be for, we'll be receiving the taxes. The bill will be, the tax bill in June will be the same format, but we'll be receiving it in the new program. So that will be the first module and general receipts. And then that will be walking.
Great.
No.
Village attorney's report? Passing?
Yep.
Public comment? Please, no more than three minutes. Review of action items? Oh, I, the only thing I want to add is that our next work session is on Tuesday, not Wednesday.
Oh, right. I could have put that in the announcements.
I want everyone here to make sure they make it next week as well. So.
Yeah.
And that's at seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Thank you, Walter Green.
Yeah.
And thank you.
It's already made it into the calendar correctly.
It's in, yeah, we updated the calendar. So yes, thank you.[1773.76]